Good evening, everybody. This is the town council meeting for December 18th at 7:00 here in the Haver hearing room. Could all rise, please. Councilor Christopher, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Inman.
Here.
Councilor Calhoun.
Present.
Councilor Christopher.
Yes.
Councilor Terry. Councilor Serrano. Councilor McDuffie.
Here.
Councilor Conde.
Present.
Vice President Boncory.
Here.
President Beckham.
Present. I want to take into motion to approve the minutes of the December 4th, 2018 town council meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And abstain, Council President.
We're on abstentions. Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation this evening by the Transportation Committee, and I see several of the members are here. Welcome.
We're in Brown tonight.
You've got the floor. Well, the cameras are running, so that's the most important.
Do you want to present? Here, we actually had slides and stuff.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Are they set up?
I sent them to Denise, I don't know if she got them.
No, the slides?
Yeah.
I just said, no, I didn't do these slides. I don't do them. Oh, yeah.
Oh, who does that?
The IT department.
Oh. Okay. We have like a whole slide for our presentation, I thought, just sending the materials. I sent them to me.
Oh, I apologize.
I have them live.
You have them on?
Yeah. I sent them to my IT.
Okay, good, then he can do them too.
They're just an abbreviated version.
We have them too.
Yeah. We have like pictures and...
Okay.
They have them, I'm sorry.
We have them.
They just don't have slide slides, but they have them.
Okay, that's fine, and there's... Yeah, that's fine.
Can we put that on channel 22?
Yeah.
If we put that on channel 22, we'll be able to view it.
That'll be virtual.
Yes, just don't put any volume on.
Don't be kidding.
You mean like a tiny loop?
Yeah.
Are you gonna read your letter of priorities first, or are you gonna do that?
Oh, that's just like to accompany.
Just something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same priority, it was just a short version.
What the setup would be. It's just nice to have visuals sometimes, so... Yeah, it's funny, it was Julia Waller, City Transportation Committee. It was two years ago, this exact same meeting, I remember the meeting right before Christmas, that we like introduced ourselves, and we're a new committee explaining what we were set up to do, so it's kind of fun to be here exactly two years later, and I think the last time we addressed you as a group was February, somewhere around then, so we wanted to take this opportunity to just get some face time with you all, and sort of share some of the priority that we have been discussing, as things that we would like to focus on in 2019, sort of low, high impact, low cost where possible, things we could do, and see some results sooner than later, and also to get your feedback, to make sure that since we're an advisory committee, we're here to advise you, we're to do things that you think are important, that these are in line with the priorities that you hold as the elected officials in this town, so we'd love your general feedback, either tonight or in meetings to follow, via email, via calls, and maybe there'll be motions that'll come out of this, but I sent the letter yesterday, and try to keep this concise, so I have my committee meetings, committee members here tonight, all but one, so Ben Shad, Phil Sharp, Southworth, and Jerry Falbo, and we're missing Chris Ayala, we have a couple honorary members who sometimes come as well, so every month we get together and sort of hash out things that we want to work on, and so let's see if that sort of aligns with what you think you would like us to be working on, since when we formed it was so clear what the priority was, because the bus service was being switched over, they had an RFP out, we needed to navigate that, make sure it was a good contract for Winthrop, we got the new buses, oh my gosh, there's no Charlie card readers, that was a big problem, so it was really clear then, but then, I mean, the field of transportation is so open, there's so many ways you could go with it to create an accessible, convenient mobility system, that we tried to narrow it down to our priorities, and continuing with the trend of where we started, starting with bus service, so we have these nice little...
We have a little one.
What's that?
We have a little screen, so you'll be able to see it on there, won't you?
Okay, yeah. So we have some slides. There we go. Oh, yes.
Get your mic.
It's always nice to have a part of my presentation, right? So, bus is the only form of transit that we have in this town, we're very fortunate to have a blue line nearby, but it's imperative that we're going to provide options, facilitate development, that's not entirely relying on everyone driving all the time for every trip, we need to invest in our transit, so those are our buses, we have great looking buses, some of the best in the system, the newest, we've got Charlie card readers, you can track it with your app, but there's a lot of low hanging fruit that we could pursue to make the buses a more appealing option, not just for people who don't have any other option, which is actually a lot of people in this town, the ridership is quite high, if you've ever taken the T home at 11:30, 12 at night, you'll see those buses are jammed with people coming back from restaurants and night shift, shift workers, and that's a lot of people, they live out in the point, live by the beach, so providing a service, but we would like to make it a service that everyone wants to take at any given time of day, not just for our community, but for getting around town, so our number one thing, we've been working on this for a while, is the signs, just making sure our stops are marked with more than a blue stripe, or some of the signs have a T but not the actual route number and the destination, and it's not always clear where you are in Winthrop, if it's gonna go to Orient Heights or the point, and we have more and more new residents who wouldn't necessarily know, or to even ask their neighbors, so we're working with the T on that, but we might actually need you as a council to help us push, it's been a very uphill battle with the T getting that done, even though we have a list of exact, a complete inventory of what stops need to be marked or signs replaced, the T kind of doesn't want to push this, because a lot of, in a lot of these places, there might need to be some parking enforcement that's not currently done, so the bus can actually pull up to the curb, it's kind of a loosey-goosey system right now, to make it official and streamlined, might need to actually have a meeting with them, or show that, you know, it's more than just our committee, who cares, it's actually the elected officials of the town, so that's one part of that, and the second point is, so the on-street parking restrictions, a good example is just right across the street, actually by the convenience store, there's a bus stop, but there's no marked parking restrictions, so the bus just stops in the street, and people kind of just get on in the street, and obviously that's not so safe, so we'd like to take care of that, and then where possible, pursue some accommodations, I know this is a funding issue, shelters, trash receptacles, things that make people feel like when they take the bus, they're a valued person, that it's a dignified choice, that the town cares about not just the bus, but the people who take the bus, and we can do a lot to communicate that by how we prioritize the buses and the places where a bus rider is waiting, so that's, those are sort of our, those are some pictures that we pulled of our typical Winthrop bus stop, some are better than others, so lots of other area for improvement that wouldn't take a lot of effort, or even a lot of money, that could make a really big difference, especially if someone who's new to town, like, oh wow, great, great bus stops, I can definitely take the bus to work if I move to Winthrop, awesome, and I can use my app and my Charlie card. So the second thing that we see as something we could do that would make a big impact and not cost a lot is looking at signage, signage around town, there's actually not a whole lot of signs in general, and we thought this would be a really great opportunity to choose a few strategic signs that would be really instrumental in communicating our values, namely the speed limit, just letting people know what it is, ultimately we would love to see the speed limit reduced to 25 miles per hour townwide, a lot of communities are doing that, I know we had a couple flyovers, or flip over accidents recently, speeding is obviously a problem, setting a speed limit isn't going to solve everything, and certainly posting a sign isn't either, but it can go a long way in helping, that at least people know that it's there, and then up places around school zones, parks, you know, children crossing, just signs that send a message, and then we have a lot more people biking, especially when the Lime Bikes are here, so a simple sign that said, "Bike-friendly community, share the road," it's not even infrastructure, just a sign, and we could look into costs or sharing printing services with Revere, or another town that actually has, you know, maybe OZ is a favor, has a printing machine, do you guys not have anything to cut me off at any point?
No, we're all about bike infrastructure.
And this is, this is just starting with signage, so really simple things, and then going a step further from that, bike lanes, because we did see such an uptick in biking, and especially young people riding bikes, we, so with Bike Winthrop have done a lot with educate, education around biking, but it would be great to play a little bit of catch-up with the infrastructure, to sort of make our streets step up a little bit to the level that people are actually biking, so a lot of our streets, we're very lucky, are narrow, small, it's kind of hard to go really fast on all of them anyway, we don't have three ways or expressways, but there's definitely a number of streets where a bike lane could be put in, it's just paint, it's not infrastructure, certain things like flex posts or divisions make it even better, and there's some places where that might work, and it really invites people to try biking because it feels safe, less cars on the road, and that's better for people who drive, so I don't want you guys to think we're only prioritizing people who bike or walk, it literally makes the whole system better when there's options, so we're trying to sort of play catch-up and prioritizing some of those other options. Intersection safety, and this is one that could cost almost nothing, or millions of dollars, depending how far we go with it, but it's a big priority issue that we would like to pursue, and we're very unfortunate that we, we're very fortunate that we do have federal funding coming through the tip for Revere Street, and I'm not sure if you guys have seen the plans for that, but they're pretty incredible as far as making both the corridor and intersections around Crest Ave and McGee's Corner safe for all modes, so what it sort of, will set this new standard for what our streets can be, and we really feel strongly that there's some very easy things that we could do for the most visible intersection in town, which is right when you come into street, in the town, Pleasant and Main, it's actually physically impossible to cross that street as pedestrian safe, there's actually no button that you can press, and you have to look behind you if you're crossing from where the laundromat is to the other side of the street, and the cars whip around really fast, and there's no, there's no signal at all, I haven't looked at the crash statistics, but that's something we'd want to do, like where are people having accidents, so just installing a signal there would be great, but then a complete intersection redesign would be even better, and we could even do some of this tactic, with tactical urbanism, just using paint to show what if the curb was brought out, what if there was a pedestrian crossing island here, what would that look like, and so people can experience that and re-envision how the street space is used before we spend a lot of money on concrete and asphalt and things like that, that, that costs a lot, so we'd love to pursue that, namely at that, at that prime intersection, and I know that involves partnering with TSAC, and we very much like to do that, so, and there's other, other intersections as well, but that's really the main one, and so the next point here, yeah, is Sabres to School, and you may know that we've worked with them, they've come to town, done some studies for the Port Bank School, and they have requested that they sort of have an official place to live within the town, and we would be happy to be that committee, where if they have ideas, or have promotions, programs, Walk to School Day, incentives to help people walk to school more safely, that we would be that public body to do that, and that does require, I think, a change to our committee structure, to our committee call, and so we did vote about that in November, and then that would be something to discuss, if you think that's an appropriate thing for our committee, we would be willing to, but it's up to you. The next one is complete streets policy implementation, last year was very exciting when we had the secretary come to town, and the senators, and to celebrate the awards of all the complete streets grants, it was really great that that actually happened here in Winthrop, and it's fantastic that we have a grant that's tied up for the, for the center where the servicing happens, but there's a lot of things in that policy that haven't been pursued yet, and that's not just infrastructure stuff, not just looking through the prioritization plan and saying, oh, we could do a better crossing here, or change the signal timing here, or bike lane here, but actually the formation of a complete streets committee, which was, I think, part of the policy, and we would love to be a part of that, or help pursue that, so that there's some, some level of someone actually paying attention to how this policy gets built in, in a more regulatory fashion to the town, and then a lot of the other things that we're, that we're prioritizing sort of fall under complete streets, because that's really the overall umbrella of how to be make our, our streets safe and accessible for everyone, and we have an incredible prioritization plan, that is like a laundry list of things that you could do, depending on money, essentially, and where our priorities are, so to that end, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the Vision Zero Initiative, it's essentially to, to have a city to make a goal that there will be zero traffic fatalities, that not a single person is going to die or be injured on our streets, very simple, to become a Vision Zero committee, a community actually is sort of a big commitment, our community probably isn't, it's not feasible for us to make the financial commitments of being one, but you can certainly use Vision Zero as, as a guideline for how, to make a statement of, that we really prioritize safety, this is the approach through which we take when we make our transportation improvements. And our last one, I was hoping Chris Ayala would be here to speak to this, but East Boston Greenway expansion, we've been talking with some of our partners in East Boston about this, there's opportunity to continue that path around Orient Heights when that parking lot gets redone, and ultimately across the bridge where there used to be a rail trestle to Morton Street where the boatyard is getting a easement, they're a very complicated long-term project, but we'd love to keep pushing that along, if that's something that you all think is important, it could really unlock an incredible new means of access, not just East Boston, but to the T for people in Winthrop, coming out of Winthrop and into Winthrop, and also connect to more regional networks like Landline, the Emerald Network, Suffolk Downs, whatever happens there, and active transportation network, so that's sort of an opportunity that we would love to pursue, so again, we recognize that we are here to provide advice, and we would want to make sure that the advice that we're doing, there's things that you want to be advised on, and that you think is important, so really appreciate your listening, and any feedback that you have, some of my committee members have something to add. Copy to the presentation?
Joey, we all have it on, online already.
You have it?
We have it.
Yeah.
He doesn't use this very often.
Wow! Sorry, that was a lot jam-packed into in a short period of time.
Yeah, so it kind of falls into two categories, one is looking at what we have, trying to figure out if there's some low hanging fruit, as you said, that we could, you know, figure out would be useful and easy to implement right now, and then the other is just these couple of areas where coordination with some other bodies that could help provide assistance to the town, you know, maybe they didn't find the right place to talk to somebody, or there's not somebody appointed for that communication, and we could try to help facilitate that, a lot of those are community-based organizations, not necessarily, you know, state or officials, so it could make sense, but it's kind of, you know, what do you want us to do, and how do you want us to do it?
Counselor.
So, a while ago, we had talked, or I know you guys had talked about changing ideas that the community had around changing the bus lines, and I know that's something that you've been working on as like a long-term goal, do you have any sense of how long that process might take?
Exactly, I do. That's part of the MBTA Better Bus Project, and just at last week's Fiscal Management Control Board, the T reported that they would have their recommendations by the end of this month for MBTA-operated routes, so that does not include us, and I'm not sure when the recommendations for the Winthrop lines would be, but the, the board wants to see these service changes put into place this summer, we went to the public meetings, we did our own sessions here, compiled a huge list of Winthrop priorities, and extending, getting a route, are you talking about out to Suffolk Downs, or to Beachmont? Or just changing the routes in general?
Just in general, yes.
Changing the route up in the Highlands?
The Highlands part, yes, whether that's a bus, or a shuttle, or some different way of servicing that underserved portion of town, yes, and then the people in Governor's Park came out to our meeting and had a lot of suggestions around the frequencies that a lot of them leave for work, you know, 6:00 AM or before, and so we're hoping that that feedback was taken seriously, and we'll be, we'll hopefully hear about it by the end of this month, and see service changes in the summer, that's what the secretary wants to see happen.
And what, what body is, would we go to if we had suggestions or anything like that, is this Paul Revere, or is this...
No, it's just the T. I mean, the T controls these routes, Paul Revere just drives the buses.
Yeah, and one other question, I think one thing that, where the community is going to be faced once the weather starts changing in the spring is going to be the e-scooter permitting, that's something that slowly but surely made its way into our community last, last fall, and I think it's only going to grow in the next year, it's also a pretty good opportunity, I think, to solve that last mile problem, that Winthrop has, and I, I think one thing that could be helpful for the council as we move forward in this permitting process, is if you could maybe survey what some other towns have done?
With the, the e-bikes?
With the, yeah.
No one here has scooters yet, but a lot of other cities do.
Yeah, no one, yeah.
Nobody close by to us.
No one in the Boston region.
No one in the Boston region has them.
Yeah, and they've tried, but if you go to the Bay Area, certainly you see scooters all over the place, and all over town.
Well, yeah, I think that that would be helpful, maybe, to figure, in a lot of ways, we're really beginning this process, and that would be, I think, really helpful, because it's, it's gonna happen.
And it's disruptive.
Yeah.
But it's opportunity as well.
Well, if a couple cans of paint helped organize things a little better, so there's a space for that, it will be less intrusive into car traffic, and a lot safer overall, so I think you're right to think about getting ahead of it, for sure, I mean, this is just a list that we're asking for approval, so you could certainly add some things if you want, we're just trying to get the ball rolling.
Anyone else comment this?
One good question, Counselor, is that similar to the Lime Bikes, they would be scooters that you would...
Lime has scooters.
You would app onto them and use them as you need them?
That's right.
If this is in private use, that you're referring to?
It's the same, if they're shared, you can have your own private scooters too, actually, some people do own their own electric scooters, and you put them on your back and take them on...
Would this be supplemental to the Lime Bike program?
Part of it, and I, I mean Lime has deployed that in other communities.
Motorized?
Motorized.
Motorized, yeah.
Yeah, motorized scooters.
Two thousand for the sidewalk.
Theoretically.
People don't know how to ride them.
So it's, it begs the question how to be retrofit on streets to accommodate these other motorized, non-car modes.
I believe in communities with, that implemented, it wasn't as easy as the Lime Bikes.
The scooters?
Yeah.
Yes.
Leave them everywhere, and there's people getting hurt because they don't know how to use them, in many cases, so it's a little more education.
Yeah, there's a lot of education. I was in Mexico City in November, and they have lots of scooter companies that are there, and they've actually had a lot of business partnerships, that businesses have actually created space, like in their patios, or their storefronts for scooter parking, just to streamline it, and in Sacramento, they have a dockless scooter and bike program, and they do have not docks for them, but designated zone, it's even just paint on the sidewalk, or parking space, instead of one car, 10 bikes and eight scooters, and they're packed, and it sort of gets them off, gets the, the messy feeling, of a sense of disorderly conduct takes that away.
Anyone else? Yes?
I have a question. Yes, I do, if...
Go ahead.
I don't want to extend your presentation, it's excellent, by the way, and I appreciate your input and your time, and, but there's a couple, couple questions that came up, when you mentioned the number of users on the BOSS system, that you said is pretty extensive, is that anecdotal evidence, or do you really have real numbers?
Well, I haven't gotten updated ridership, last time, I think the most, the latest ridership numbers we had were about 3,000 a day.
Wow, really?
I mean, so there's definitely walls in the middle, where the levels are not full, but during inbound and outbound peak, those buses are full.
Okay, thank you.
I would love to get updated numbers, that's something I've been meaning to do.
Yeah, that's...
We have a new service planner, certainly this bus stop sign conversation will be an opportunity to get some new ridership numbers.
I need for numbers before the Charlie cards, right?
Yes, and now it's...
Probably be higher now.
Yes, because now they have the automated passenger counter, so every single person who goes on a bus is counted, before there was no way of knowing.
Right.
Now we know exactly who, how many people are getting on at what time of the day, at what stops, and that was used in knowing which stops to even not to get rid of, there was some that were actually phased out, but you wouldn't know, because there was no sign anyway.
There were a lot of lines across the MBTA that have much higher service than Winthrop does, and has much lower ridership.
Yeah.
So in a lot of ways, we're very underserved compared to other buses and communities in the region.
There's one more, a couple more things, you mentioned about the intersection safety, and I'm precinct one, as you can see, and the top of Walden Street and Main Street is a problem, a continuous problem, because anyone who's made that stop to take a right or a left at the top of that street, on the left side, the road dips down toward Reed Street, and if there's cars parked on the left-hand side, you cannot see small cars coming towards you, and so when you stick your nose out to get out into the turn, here comes somebody flying up from the left, very tough to see.
Visibility issues?
Yes, and then at night, there's a big floodlight at the top of that street that seems to go off and on, yeah.
That's the snow.
No, no, this is a floodlight to light the intersection, which improves the visibility significantly, but then it'll suddenly go off.
I usually feel pretty safe as a cyclist crossing that intersection, I think probably because of that light.
Could be, but it's, it's something to think about, because we have the, the traffic lights at Herman and Main, which is a clear visibility location and less of a need.
Oh, that's what I was thinking of.
So I don't know if, if it makes sense to do anything beyond that, but I think it's something that, you know, as, as a group, you could look into that, and the last thing is the, the Orient Heights street light, I know we don't control Boston, it's Boston, but part of the traffic, part of the traffic problem getting out of Winthrop is the timing of that light.
The signal at the intersection, or the...
Yeah, the whole intersection at the heights, because we have much more traffic trying to get out of Winthrop than crossing Bennington Street, and so even taking 15 seconds off of one side or the other to get a few more cars out of Winthrop could make a big difference, so I wonder if there's any way we could look into that.
Is the city of Boston owns those signals? I would assume so, sometimes it's DCR or another agency, it's probably the TD, so a partnership?
Yeah, just something that I would like to consider.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor?
Yes, who would we go to, and Joey, really thank you for your presentation and all the work that you've been doing, I know you're giving this work a really hard, to make sure that we get those shelters at the bus stops, now that winter's coming, now that, you know, the weather here is like crazy.
The T doesn't provide those.
The T does not provide shelters in, in town.
No, cities and towns own their sidewalks and their bus stops, the T doesn't own its streets, just operates the buses.
So we would have to pass something into our next budget?
We would have to purchase the shelters ourselves.
To predict, any idea of the cost of those?
I would love to look into funding opportunities, if there are grants available for cities and towns, I mean, small municipalities, to improve bus accommodations.
Maybe that's something we can charge you with, also...
That's why I was in there, yeah.
Also...
Could you know you feel that way?
When you're talking about those intersections, like the intersection of Pleasant and Main, you know, I see the, the pedestrian crosswalk up at the bridge, further up at the heights that flashes, and, you know, people can control it as they're coming up to push a button, and everything stops.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Any idea what something like that would cost, and would we have to also do that within our town budget?
Yep.
There are no grants or anything but that.
We own the intersection, do we not?
Yes.
Do we own all those signals?
Well, I don't know if we would...
I would have to look into it, I think we do.
I even question where you would put it, that would, you would have to take a complete study up there, because most people that cross, cross by where the coffee shop is, from the variety store, you know, across to where the health center is, that's where most of the movement is, not on the corner, not on the intersection.
Because it's the, it's the most dangerous point to cross.
And it is, I was gonna bring that up as well.
It's the farthest distance, and there's nowhere in between, and there's not even a signal, and there's not even a button to push.
And it's tough if you're coming, coming out of the Ace parking lot, because of the trees, sometimes you can't see, so that would, that was one of the things I was gonna bring up, we need to do, you know, TSAC needs to do a study on that whole area.
I have talked to Terry about it several times, there's a story behind it.
I'm sure there is.
If you all felt it was important, I'm sure it would help.
I don't think it's important, personally.
Anything else?
Especially a lot of the, it's, the health center workers park on Pleasant and use the intersection to walk, so I imagine, ask them how they feel, you know, doing, certainly whenever I do, I go on the narrow part of Pleasant, cross where it's not as far of a distance, you just have to get your timing right, and hope no one's, shoo, speeds around.
You, you gave us the statistics about how many people are riding the buses, do you have the statistic of how many people use those Lime Bikes?
Yes.
Do you know what that is up to?
Month or total, it was 12,000 rides?
What?
I mean, you can break it down, we have access to the dashboard, if you wanted a I mean, you can break it down, we have access to the dashboard if you wanted a complete report like by the day, by the month.
If you get on this thing more often, you might see.
I wrote a letter in the transcript about it, actually.
Yes, I did, and I read that, but I just didn't remember these numbers since time, so I wanted to make a quick. Okay, and my concern is if you're going to bring in the e-bikes which are motorized, we're going to have a liability problem because we don't have helmets even for the line bikes. We have these people on motorized motor vehicles without protection, will we have a liability problem?
No, we're going to have to set regulations with that, we will have a liability problem.
Okay, anyone else wish to be heard? I just want to thank the committee really for all the work you've done, you've done a tremendous job for the, for the council and for the citizens of the town. There's just a couple of things that are high on my priorities.
Sure.
Number one, going back to the line bikes, now that we've gone through a season of the line bikes, we know where they've been located, some of them on the sidewalk with obstructions, but some of them were in areas that were very active. And I would think, I would like to see a recommendation to the council between now and the spring where areas that you say that this is the best place to put them, in other words, there might be areas that were no good, maybe do some type of a survey, maybe you can find out what were the best areas.
You could, you could use the data where people went, there's actually heat maps of where were the, for the most trips and that shows you the demand lines.
Right, but the point I wanted to make is, just as an example, up in front of the E.B. Newton School.
Yeah.
They had them on, on the sidewalk and then they put them on the grass. If that's a good area for them, then maybe we can identify that, several different areas in the town and maybe we can get DPW to, you know, put in a little footing of cement so that they're off the sidewalks.
Yeah, creating designated spaces is something we would love to identify.
That's, that's one thing. The Pleasant and Main Street, I, I think that's critical that we really look at that, TSAC really should be looking at that because that's an accident waiting to happen.
And it's welcome to Winthrop too.
Exactly.
It really is.
The point you made about the bike lanes, there are many streets that we have paved and that are good streets that we could simply put down, you know, a bike path, maybe a recommendation, what streets you'd like to see based on what streets are in good condition. That might be something we can do at, you know, at very minimal cost. And the only other one was the, the East Boston Greenway connection to Winthrop. You know, that area that you're talking about, the old trestle, that was years ago, that was envisioned as the third road out of Winthrop, but I know the MBTA is doing major work on their maintenance shack there, they're going to be doing all kinds of work. This may be the opportunity for us to kind of connect and get something, maybe we can get some type of a grant to put some type of a footbridge or a bike bridge across.
Yeah, and there's a lot of regional momentum around these regional bike walking networks.
So, that's my two cents, but again, thank you very, very much for your input and your report, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your feedback.
Thank you for your time, Lisa.
Reach out anytime if you're going to your man. Thank you.
All righty. The next item is a public hearing to transfer twenty-seven thousand four hundred from the Capital Stabilization General Fund FY eighteen, latter one repass. Does anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard on the council? Hearing none, I'll close out that public hearing. Public comment? No public comment, hearing none, I will close that. We have a correspondence, none. The committee reports on finance, do you want to make this under the old business or do you want to do it now? Finance report.
Whatever.
Let's wait under old business.
Sounds good.
Okay. Town manager report.
Um, so this is going to be a little bit more extensive than usual. First, happy holidays to everyone at home, we won't see you again until January eighth in this type of forum, so hope everyone has a good holiday, first of all. Kind of meat and potatoes type of stuff. First, the assistant town manager and CFO have kind of hit the ground running with a lot of different things and it's been very helpful to me because I've been able to designate or delegate some things and get them off my plate and get some action happening on them. First one is opportunity zones that the assistant town manager, Dave Rodriguez, went to a meeting about this last week with the state concerning the federal opportunity zones and the investment is entirely profit, private and there's no public money involved in it, but the tract in it is, it's a census block track which is eighteen oh five and Winthrop Shore Drive, Shoma Shirley Street and stuff like that is where our area of our opportunity zone is. And it's an interesting project, if anything, it's interesting funding source for potential developers, it's, it's access to relatively easy money from the federal government and it's, it was identified a while ago as an area that needs some type of redevelopment. So if there, there is talk of one small development like three-unit building type of thing happening in this opportunity zone, but this is where our census track is, so if there are opportunities or developers or people that you know that are looking to invest in Winthrop, this is a prime location that they can kind of get some easy money and do some unique things. And he wanted to let you know that he is ready and able to like move forward with anyone who's looking to develop in that area, so that was essentially.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Had, did David, did he define if one of the buildings right in the, we used to call it Jack Elkin Square, but right in Delby's Corner.
Yeah.
There's a building on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
He thought that was in that zone.
He believes it is, we're getting, we're trying to get a little tighter on the GIS map because like this map right here, the line's kind of thick and it encompasses like the entire road, it doesn't define what side of the road that it's on. We believe that it entails the left-hand side of this road, so I assume this is the western part. And the, at the topmost point of the map where that property is, we do believe that it's in there, but we're trying to go in with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that that property is.
But it also includes the old trestle?
Yes.
Okay. To be more specific for, for the folks at home, this opportunity zone, in this particular case, is basically from Delby's Corner, the, the intersection of Washington Avenue and Shirley Street, just about all the way down close to the Yacht Club.
Yeah.
On the right-hand side.
Yep.
And what is the incentive for an investor to come in, what, what are the Bennys?
So, I mean, it was created in two thousand seventeen to provide tax benefits for investors who reinvest capital gains into designated opportunity zones, so specifically giving people an easy, it's a very low-cost way to get financing for a project in a way that people are unit, looking to, reutilizing hedge funds, but they're not bad hedge funds, this is good type of like more altruistic use of hedge funds, looking to make money in a short amount of time. It's almost, they call them designated opportunity zones, previously they had been described as like distressed areas and things like that, but it's areas where they're trying to make it as easy as possible for people to kind of reinvest their money and get out clean with it. So this is a good opportunity if there are projects looking to go.
Will David try to put meetings together with the property owners and so on?
Yep, absolutely, yep, he has a big map up in his office of.
Yeah, I was up in County.
Yeah, yeah, and how we could potentially make it look, I mean, it's, this is an important area where, you know, it could be, it's not necessarily an entryway into Winthrop, but it's a way that, you know, I'm looking to potentially position Winthrop as why are you going to drive to Maine or the Cape when you can drive ten minutes out of Boston and get to Winthrop and use our beaches type of thing? We have to facilitate that message and this would help facilitate some of that message, but this area fits right in with the messaging of like you have a reason to come to Winthrop, you don't have to drive an hour away, you can get what you're looking for very close to home and then you can go have drinks at home afterwards.
Excuse me, Austin, so once again, it goes down to what is it, eighteen oh five Shirley Street, which is, can you be more clearer?
No, 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 so the, the census track, it's, so it's a census block, so when the census is done, they cut up every state and municipality into individual census tracks, so there's a certain number of people that are within a census block and that's what this is. So it's not, the census track number is eighteen oh five, but that's not the address associated with it. But if people want more information, I would encourage them to reach out to David Rodriguez and he can bring them up to speed and presumably identify any plots of land if people are interested in doing some work down there.
Thank you.
I think your clerk sent over, this evening you sent out an email, did you not?
Yes.
Yeah, he, he wrote a memo to you as well, sure.
Did you also say it was along with Shore Drive?
There's a fresh email that just came just before the meeting.
Shore Drive?
Uh, it's part of, yeah, it is part of Winthrop Shore Drive. From Hawthorne down, basically out to.
To Beacon Circle?
Yeah, out to Shirley area, no, not to Beacon Circle, out towards, going out towards like Deer Island more.
Yeah, Beacon Circle.
Okay, sorry, I don't know.
Like down the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Clock line down.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Interesting.
So, I mean, it's a cool thing, it's a good way for people to potentially make money. And again, like it's, we need people to start spending money in Winthrop, that's what we want, to raise all property values, so.
One more thing, is there any grant money for that? Or is this just low-interest money or?
It's, it's more focused on private investors looking to.
Okay.
Yeah, hedge fund-y type of thing, so it's not really grant-focused, it's trying to get people from outside to invest some money in Winthrop and then us live with the gains of it. The more pressing thing that I want to address after some of the public meetings that have happened recently concerning the project on Somerset, the Old Family Dollar site, so councillor Christopher had a precinct meeting a few weeks ago, there have been meetings that the developer did with the business community on one day and then there was a meeting earlier this week, or wait, last week, concerning the topic. It was going to be on the planning board's agenda for last night, but they were encouraged to actually bump it to the January, February meeting pending another project that may take up the entire meeting time. Where we are with this project right now and the Center Business District zoning in general is we have zoning on the books right now. We do not have a map that accurately reflects the zoning on the books. So there's going to be concurrent paths. One path is the project that has been proposed, regardless of map we choose, need variances, will need a variance on height, site setback and parking. Those are clear, they will have to get variances on those no matter what the zoning is, whether it's in a budding property or within the Center Business District, they're, they're in the Center Business District, it's just the, are they in a butter or are they in the full district type of thing? So they have to get zoning relief regardless, so we're going to have that run on one track of they have to get variances, that's the, if they want to continue down this road, they're going down the road to getting variances and that's just what it is. You know, it would, it would almost be harder if they were closer, if they were coming in right at the right height, it would be harder because then they will have built something for a specific zoning that we couldn't necessarily grant them the relief on because they wouldn't be seeking a variance, so they will have to seek over variance regardless, so that's one track that will be happening. Simultaneously, what David and myself are working on, specifically David, is kind of the uncertainty that happened previously with this area. There was a map that is predominantly used in the report that was done with Mass Development and MAPC concerning the master plan for the Center Business District. That map, I call into question, it's, it's an interpretation of the regulations, but it's an interpretation, not specifically the only interpretation. Earlier this year, when Terry De La Hante was in this role, he tried to do the same type of work on this and was given some opinions and then expressed publicly that it is the opinion of the town manager that there's no single-family houses, homes or two-family homes that border a business in the Center Woodside at Cottage Park Road, Somerset Bartlett, included in the Center Business District. So that was the memo that he wrote on February first of this year. So what we have brought to light in turning, talking without sort of legal help are the opinion doesn't answer the fundamental question of what are the boundaries of the district? That's the, that's the fundamental question, that we need a map that clearly delineates this. At present, we don't have that map, so we are going to be working to get that map done in the near term. We will be working with the Center Business District Manager Committee, we'll be working on that. We will have a zoning map that will be publicly communicated and have a public process, it's almost a re-engagement with the Center Business District planning process just to make sure everyone is on board with what's going forward and if we want to wholesale revisit the zoning regulations that are on the books, it's better to clear them up before we have more projects at our door than kind of fight about a map that isn't right and we don't have one. So in this memo, David kind of set out some of the next steps forward. Initially, it's setting a baseline, which is an interpretation of the zoning map, or the zoning regulations that we have on the book. We will use the master plan as a roadmap because the master plan, we feel like dictated how the zoning regulations were changed, but again, because some of these things are malleable, we want to give the public the opportunity to weigh in on them if there are some things that are completely glaring and we want to know that the public is opposed to them, engaging the public. And then we want to adapt that master plan, like a revised version of the master plan into a usable predictable code, like we want to clarify this so anyone who comes to town understands what we're looking at. In talking to the developer of the Family Dollar site, they were completely under the impression that they were developing essentially something that was a small change in the variance in height and more of a major change in the setbacks and the parking, which was not manager Kressman or Terry, manager De La Hante, this was from manager McKenna when he still worked, he had expressed those thoughts to the developer. So we have a developer that thought they were doing the right thing, we have a community that has obviously had some issues with how some of this stuff is shaking out, they need a variance regardless, so they're going to go on that track, but what we're going to do internally is clear up some of this stuff as well. So that is the next step with that, I, I hear you on what you had offered on a motion, councillor Christopher. Again, I would stress that I don't think a motion is necessary because it's something that we're working on that is feasible to be accomplished within, I would say, I'd say before summer of this year, all of that will be tied up and we will have like clearly updated things that can express what we're looking for better. Sure.
So first, I just want to say, when we look at the map and the master plan that was drawn, I don't know if it was ever the intent of anybody on that committee to have those lines be the lines that we were going to be basing zoning off.
Yeah.
I think if you look at any of the maps that were from nineteen thirty-seven to nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-seven, two thousand and six, every single one of them has the same shape and the master plan does not have that shape in it. You know, I know that there aren't properties that the lines are around and it's not specific enough and that's why I've pushed since, you know, since manager De La Hante made the memo in February to really solidify where those lines are. However, what his memo really did for a lot of people in that community was I think it, it made it very, it was a really, it, it made it solid that these people whose properties are butted, you know, commercial properties that were going to be developed or were being planned to be developed, it gave them some solace to say at least the town agrees with me on this one line, where this one line is. And I appreciate all the work that we need to do in order to get the entire zone together, but I think it's very important for the town to maintain that those properties are not in the Center Business District because we don't have the type of zoning where, you know, if you move a line backwards and somebody's in it, that they can just do more with their property because of the nature of our zoning where we have essentially created a buffer zone in, in order to what the person next to them is able to do. So I, I think that it's great that we're moving forward, but I really want to make sure that the town isn't backing off of that statement that those residential properties are not in the Center Business District because it's a very important point. And we went through a long process last year to get this done, I know that the town, the town employees did a lot of work and I think that that point, and I hope that we stay with that point because it was very important to the community and I think it will continue to be while we're going forward with this plan.
Okay. Do you want me to respond to that?
Yeah, I would like to know if that's the.
Sure, so, you know, I, my issue with that is that the way Terry expressed it and based off of speaking to some counsel on this, he expressed an opinion concerning roads and not, and didn't do the work of updating the map. That's what fundamentally has to be done is just like this census track map that we have for the opportunity zones, we need a map that says exactly what our Center Business District does. Does it include the middle school site, those types of things? Like, you know, I, looking at the middle school site, we're going to have to update zoning for that, should I adopt Center Business District, is that comprehensively looking at that, is it an overlay district, is it an SDOD type of thing? I think that Terry expressed an opinion, our same lawyers expressed some doubt about that opinion because that opinion was not supported by a map or identification of the individual properties that were affected of it. And really what I would like to do is not go back on Terry's word, I would just like to re-explore the process so everyone gets on the same page of what we're doing going forward. This one project has to go for a variance, so they're going to have to take their licks in going through, going through that process and trying to seek out a variance on multiple fronts, which is multiple battles they have to fight. But going forward, I want to try to re-explore this so we get as many people on the same page as possible and that if there are changes that we want to our zoning language to, that better fit what the community's looking for, that we get it right. I don't want to, I don't want these, we have a few things that are left in like legal grayish areas or we didn't, we don't totally finish off the circle type of thing and that's what I want to try to do. Like I want to get it set so that when a developer comes, it's a yes or no question, it's not, this is my interpretation of it, there's no map to back it up and this is what I'm selling you on, but if I leave, then it's my interpretation or my opinion versus someone else's type of thing.
Yeah, and that's, and that's been my position on the issue since Jump Street.
Yeah.
Has been that we needed to solidify what it is, I just hope that in the meantime, that that is still the town's interpretation of where we are presently.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, I would say I want to develop a map, like that, that's my thing. At this point, we got this one project, they got to do variances. In terms of what we're doing going forward, I really want to just clear the air on it, get us all moving on the same path type of thing, because I, I feel like some of these meetings are, people are coming in a little hot and heavy and I, I don't think we necessarily need to do that because it's, going back with some other things here, I don't want it to be based off of interpretation, I want it to be like, here's. I want it to be like, here's the rule, this is what they're doing. They they have it as right or not type of thing and we can try to move forward. Um, so it's, I I'm trying, I'm I'm trying to be as delicate as possible to not um talk about certain things with this type of thing. But um, we're gonna, it's a glaring issue that we want to fix in the near term. Um, so that again, some of these projects can kind of come to fruition in the nearest future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, any other questions on the center business district stuff? Okay, so that is that. Um, in terms of, we have the holiday party this week, which everyone's very excited for. I hope some of you will be joining us there. Larissa has done a great job in planning it and we're all uh hot to trot on it. Um, inspectional services is um working hard lately with um a couple problem properties. Um, and um, otherwise, the only big thing is is that our um, uh, our health department brought it up a little while ago, but the teen vaping issue as, I mean, it was in the New York Times this weekend. Like it's, it's a thing, I don't know how to necessarily address it correctly in this forum, but um our health department and and police department are well aware of it. Um, there may be changes in trying to enforce and figure out um if certain venues are selling to youth or how youth are getting their hands on it type of thing. But this isn't just a winter problem, like this is a national problem and a lot of people are putting their heads together. I mean, we we had a meeting, the metro mayors with um the secretary of health and human services and we were all talking about it because it's sadly, it's opioids than vaping. It's like the next topic that comes up with um health issues right now. So um it's getting a lot of attention, but our health department is working on it along with the school department and things like that. Um, otherwise, um, those are all of my topics from the management report um that I have for right now. Sorry, that was more extensive than usual.
Thank you.
Um, council president, I have a question if I may.
Sure.
Uh, town manager, I have a question about statistics and and data collection, actually, specifically with with regards to TAFSAV.
Yeah.
Now that the speed limit has been lowered from thirty miles an hour to twenty five miles an hour.
Yeah.
Which is a great first step, but now we need enforcement in that area.
Okay.
And I'm hoping that in the future, as part of the town manager's written report, we can include some statistics on how frequently police vehicles are in that area enforcing traffic, specifically around shift change times of seven A M., three P M. and eleven P M. And I'm also hoping to um get information on how frequently are people pulled over? How frequently are tickets um given out? Is that something that we can include on a monthly basis in the town manager's written report?
So potentially. My issue with that is that I do not want to start giving um eighteen intersections worth of traffic counts um based off of where our police department is enforcing um traffic regulations around town. I understand that you have a special attention, it's your precinct. Um, this is the area that you care about because a rule just got changed. Um, I, I don't necessarily want to inform my department heads that I want that type of information. I could maybe have them have a more generalized report about all um citation related activity, like uh stops and things like that. Um, but the directed enforcement of one road, um, and one section of road when we have thirty six miles of road overall, um, I kind of care about the network of roads and the network enforcement rather than the one specific area. And I understand the one specific area is important to you, but I don't want to set a precedent in my town manager's report about specific uh things like that, whereas I'd rather talk about it more holistically. So I could talk about statistics, but I don't, I don't want to get down into the minutia of one intersection because uh just as we were just talking with transportation safety advisory committee, there's there's other intersections of interest around town um that, um, you know, we talk about vision zero and things like that. I'd be more concerned about like what are traffic fatalities right now? Like what are we moving towards in terms of a vision zero? Or what are we looking at in terms of redoing intersections and what traffic counts are at our most dangerous intersections rather than a place where the speed limit was reduced, even though there was a sign there previously that had indicated a lower speed? So we can do it, it's just not, I, I really don't like the precedent that it sets that uh my manager's report will include um information about enforcement of a select intersection where um there's selective enforcement at best, um, I would say, so.
I I mean, the whole street of TAFSAV really, and and this is really an area of special concern with the Deer Island Treatment Plant there and shift changes and and um very frequent resident reporting of of speeding down that street. And I think, you know, I really liked how you often talk about how you want decisions based on data. And even if that data is, is that no one is there for whatever reason, I still think that it makes sense to have informed decisions based off of data. And I would like to see that included in the town manager's report.
Okay, um, so it, I mean, another issue that I have with it is that the information that was provided previously when you had requested information did not bore out some of the assumptions that were made by the community. And even though that the rule was changed about the speed limit, um, the traffic counts and the um assertion that speeding was happening in that area wasn't borne out in the data. So even though data was provided, it was still sought out to um offer a remedy for something that was a perceived issue instead of an um actualized issue. Um, so that's, I guess, again, like it's, um, data was provided previously and the decision wasn't made based off of the data. The da- the information was, the decision was made off of a gut feeling, which is what I'm trying to get away from. So I can give you data on it, but I would like, in the future, if data is provided, that the data is kind of like interpreted a little bit and utilized in the decision making process instead of um go, continue to go with the gut, if you get what I'm saying? Like the traffic counts were pretty clear that the traffic was not going at the speeds being um asserted by that community. Um, yet the change in the speed limit still happened, even though um I'm kind of under the assumption that in the very near future, a townwide reduction in speed limit is going to happen. So it still happened that we changed the speed limit, but it wasn't necessarily backed up with the data that was provided by the police department. So I can provide that information if you want going forward. Um, but again, I think, uh, personally, I think it sets a bad precedent of individualized attention to specific areas when um this is the whole committee with the whole committee getting attention um and all of the counselors having the opportunity to interact with the information and not um specified um information to selective um enforcement, I would say.
So when enforcement, you're gonna be careful with, and I think if you have a red eye gun and just one here in your town and you're ignoring the rest of the town all day long, you're gonna create a problem.
Yeah, big, yes, exactly. So um, I can provide that report and we can go forward from there. Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, there is one. Yes, president. Uh, town manager, um, one of my constituents has repeatedly asked me to find out about why there's no longer a uh hanging street light, flashing street light at the intersection of Bowden and I think it's Ocean View or Sea View. I always mix up those streets.
Ocean View.
Ocean View, thank you. Um, he's a very uh knowledgeable guy. Uh, he's been involved with the town for a long time, Jim Clarkum, and he's, he lives on that street. And he said that uh because of the uh school pedestrians in particular, in conjunction with what the transportation committee mentioned tonight about uh traffic safety for the children as well as uh the intersection. Um, if you could uh look into that and uh see if there's a reason why that's not.
I can, I'll have a report back to you.
There was a, there was a, there's a four way, there's a four way stop there, but there was a hanging red light.
Okay, I can, I can inquire into what it happened.
And they never put it back up again. It was there.
Well, since we have selective enforcement to begin with in terms of lights, um, I'll try to figure out what's going on with that light and we can go from there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. The school department report, we had a school committee meeting last night, uh, Monday, December seventeenth at six o'clock at the Winthrop High School, middle school. Um, the highlight of the evening was a presentation of an award to the recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence. And it went to uh Winthrop student at the Winthrop High School, Chris Finn. Uh, in addition to that, the um, the committee voted to accept the following donations. A two hundred and fifty dollar donation for the migrant uh Winthrop uh Rehobug Lodge, one fifty three. Uh, a thousand dollars from Viking Proud Fire, Viking Pride Foundation for the Winthrop High School Robotics Club. A hun- a thousand dollar donation from Dr. Anthony Costenas uh via the Mike Aruzioni Winthrop Charities for the Winthrop High School Life Skills Program. And two thousand dollar donation to the Winthrop High School Drama Society. And that was about it.
Okay.
On the old business, um, I will go to the finance uh chair. Oh, the, yeah. Person for the end.
Uh, all three of the items you want me to go through or just one?
Please.
Okay. So we met yesterday, uh, last night, councillor LaConte and Chair Luttey was there along with um Biz Zalecki and Chief Flanagan. Uh, we discussed three items of business. One was um to transfer twenty seven thousand four hundred dollars from the capital stabilization to fund um ladder one repairs. So we had previously uh allocated two hundred thousand dollars to repair um, repair engine one as part of a um, as part of a major repair that needed to get done to the engine, a ladder one, excuse me. And um, we're also involved in a uh, a class action lawsuit because of some warranty issues that we had had um on that. So um, we needed to appropriate uh this money in order to fix something that was found um while the engine was being repaired out in Wisconsin. So um, the engine should be back relatively soon, uh, given that all these repairs that are taking place.
So that's a positive recommendation out of.
Positive recommendation.
We'd like to make a motion. Uh, it doesn't need a motion because it's out of finance. Do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
It doesn't need a second. It's coming out.
Don't mind me. I'm at, I'm at the final days of a cold that I've had for a month. So I'm kind of like in.
I'll make a motion to pass.
Okay. Um, any discussion on the motion?
Need roll call.
Yes.
Stabilization.
Roll call.
Councillor Ingham.
Yes.
Councillor Callow.
Yes.
Councillor Christopher.
Yes.
Councillor Terry.
Councillor Serrano.
Councillor McDuffie.
Yes.
Councillor Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Moncory.
Yes.
President Beckia.
Yes.
Thank you.
The uh second item that we took up was a twenty thousand dollar transfer to fund the Derelict Properties line item. So this is a pretty regular uh thing that we need to replenish. It it has a great return from it, um, and goes into repairing Derelict Properties, something that we do pretty regularly. And um, we also uh recommend that this got passed unanimously. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to transfer twenty thousand from the town council reserve to replenish general fund special article F Y fourteen, Derelict Properties.
Motion has been made, any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we'll take a roll call vote. Maybe we don't really need it, but we'll take it. All right, so all in favor of the twenty thousand uh transfer say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. And the other one has been tabled, correct?
Yeah, we kept that in committee to further study.
All right.
Okay, uh, switch or recused. I gotta ask you to leave for this ne- this next item.
Only one.
It's just procedural vote, it's two of them. Thank you, councillor Christopher.
Thank you, councillor Christopher.
So um, as I stated at the last meeting concerning the uh technical changes to um the bond authorization, um, the one made on August first, two thousand seventeen, and the second one made on November thirteenth of two thousand eighteen, um, there is corresponding language concerning two votes that are um, the language has been updated to properly reflect um the intent um and will facilitate the bonding properly.
Okay, now the first one, uh, relative to the three million nine twenty, um, the loan order motion says August fifteenth. And here it's listed as August first, does that make a problem?
Um, I believe what's in the.
It's Meyer, the motions.
Yeah, the motions.
Okay. All right. Ordered that the order this council adopted on August fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, providing for the borrowing of three million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay costs for various improvements for the Winthrop Center Project, so called, is hereby amended in its entirety to provide as follows. The town appropriates the sum of three million nine two, oh, that's three million nine hundred and twenty thousand for the purpose of financing, engineering, design and construction of the water main improvements, sewer system improvements, drainage improvements, street and sidewalk improvements, and service connections for the Winthrop Center Project, including all costs incidental are related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow three million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes of the town under M G L forty four, seven and eight and any other enabling authority. That the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow and apply for any grants or aid available for the project or for financing thereof, which grants and our aid shall be expended for the project in addition to the amounts appropriated and borrowed under this order. That the town manager is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary but convenient to carry out this project. Covenant. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premium applied to the payments of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this order in accordance with M G L forty four twenty, hereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by a like amount. Do I have a second? Can you have a B one? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye, do we have a roll call on this?
We should go a roll call.
Yes.
Six.
Councillor Ingham.
Yes.
Councillor Callow.
Yes.
Councillor Christopher. Councillor McDuffie.
Yes.
Councillor Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Moncory.
Yes.
President Beckia.
Yes. Okay, ordered that the, that the order of this council adopted on November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, providing for the borrowing of four million nine hundred and thirty one thousand five hundred to pay costs for sewer and drainage funds for the town center project, so called, is hereby amended in its entirety to provide as follows. The town appropriates the sum of four million nine hundred and thirty one thousand five hundred dollars to pay costs of engineering, design and construction of water main improvements, sewer system improvements and drainage improvements, including without limitation, all costs thereof as defined in M G L twenty nine C dash one, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow a set amount under the, under and pursuant to M G L C forty one, seven and eight, uh, pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof. That that such bonds or note shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the town manager determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in M G L twenty nine C one. That the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all or proportion of such amounts through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof. And that the town manager is authorized to enter into regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. Any premium received upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment cost approved to this, by this order in accordance with M G L forty four twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay for such cost by a like amount. Do I hear?
The motion.
Second motion, any discussion on the motion?
Uh, council president.
Yes, sir.
Question on, I I know that we've kind of decided to pass these cleanly and then to pass some of the conditions we had negotiated as a a separate order to the town manager.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to pass that separate order to the town manager tonight?
You previously passed it.
It's already been passed and I'm, I must have been up for that one. Thank you for the point clarification.
Um, there's just a, a mistype, but I'll give it to you later on. Roll call, please.
Councillor Ingham.
Yes.
Councillor Callow.
Yes.
Councillor McDuffie.
Yes.
Councillor Conti.
Yes.
That's President Moncory.
Yes.
President Beckia.
Yes. Six lines of projection should be protection. Six lines up from the bottom. Six lines up on the line.
Give me one second on that.
No big deal. Okay.
Do you want to get, Peter?
Sure.
Does anyone else have this cold for a month?
My husband.
You don't?
Go through different stages.
Okay, excuse me. Under new business, do town manager, HR policies?
Do we want to go back to the DPW reporting? Do we want to have a discussion on that or do we want Councilor Lusserno here?
I think, he was the one that put the motion. I, I think we've talked about it informally.
Yep.
I would rather him here.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Yeah, it's.
Second.
It's already tipped.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. HR policies.
Okay, so in the packet this week, I included kind of one of the first parts of our personnel policy book that I'm going to be building. We worked on these, the HR department, Stacy Shar did a great job of working on some of these. The previous policies that I had on hand were developed in 2014, a fair amount of the language was out of date, they were maybe, you can't really talk about maternity leave anymore and things like that. There's different language necessary for it.
Push the green button.
Good job, Phil. So, I'm almost starting a internal policy, a HR policy book from scratch. So, these are an example of, the first ones to start, disciplinary policy, the job performance and behavior standards, the FMLA policy, which is a relatively standard policy, best practice type of policy, dress code and personal hygiene policy and procedure, and the quarry policy, almost there. One more. I think there's one more concerning for new mothers to have an area to express breast milk, and that is something that will probably be in the next group that come on January 8th. So, there'll be a subsequent group of these. What I'm looking for at this point, because this doesn't need to be approved from the council, is I'm trying to inform you of some of the policies that I'm looking to do internally. If there are particular edits that you think are glaring and necessary, please let me know. If you would like to talk about any of the individual policies further offline, I'm more than happy to have that discussion. And if there's any of them that you want to talk about publicly, we can talk about them publicly as well. I don't have a problem with that. But just wanted to start helping you build your book on these types of things. And this kind of goes into some of the other things that I'm trying to do of building a level of professionalism within the town and making sure the board knows where I'm kind of coming from in running the government. And this to me, it's not to be meant as like a stick or anything, it's just, we need to cover our bases for our liability, but also to give us a way to discipline employees if necessary, type of thing. So, that is the HR policies. That will be a topic in definitely the next meeting and potentially the meeting after that as well, as I continue to introduce new ones. The next one is the department head evaluation template.
Actually, before we move on.
Go ahead.
Are we having an employment lawyer look at these?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. No, it's not, yeah, I mean, it's, Stacy's working with, Michelle Rondazzo has been working on this, Angie and Ryan have been working on this as well. So, we have outside counsel, it's, this isn't coming from just us. MY has best practices for these types of policies, the MMA also has them available as well. So, it's kind of going through and figuring out what language we think it works best for us and then going forward with it. But yeah, no, there's, I'm not coming up with these on my own, and neither is Stacy.
The employment lawyers are looking at this and reviewing it and editing.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that, and that's what really came up with the, I was, I had a full book of ones from 2014 that were presented to Mayor Andrew McKenna, who we never brought to the council. I didn't feel comfortable with those, and I had employment lawyers look at them and be like, nope, they're just out of date at this point. And they're, again, they're only four years old, but there's a fair amount of language that's changing them. So, I want them as updated as possible, and I think it's also something that, all these documents are kind of dynamic and valuable, that we have a set policy, but then, once we get our book of policies, then it's kind of, over time, no, the language change on this one, FMLA will change eventually or something like that. So, yeah, it's, it's going to keep being updated over time on the advice on, on outside counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there a problem now, looking at your like alcohol controlled substances chapter right here?
Yep.
With the medical marijuana, now that that's been approved and it's a medicine.
You know, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky area for a lot of municipalities because there's, we run into the same issue with marijuana that we do, that the police do in trying to enforce on the roads, that there is not a go test that tells you when someone smoked. You can have a perception of being inebriated on the job that we can do somewhat of a field severity test, but it's, it's a tricky thing to enforce. We would, we would take it on a case-by-case basis if people had medicinal marijuana cards, but otherwise, the recreational use of drugs or alcohol, we're frowning upon that right now. Yeah, so.
The show was, when I read it, it says distributing, dispensing, possessing, or using, or controlling, some of these people that take that medical marijuana have those vape pens.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, we back out of that in the disciplinary policy, in the stuff that's kind of like the illustrative purposes, the arriving or being at work under the influence of alcohol and/or other non-prescribed drugs or abusing prescription drugs. So, so I'm going to have medicinal marijuana card, but if they're using it a lot, I don't know the best way to say this, they could be calling to question for it, type of thing. But again, case-by-case basis. It's just, again, these are illustrative purposes that we need to start building things for, if someone is reprimanded for something and we're putting something in a file, we want to hearken back to the policy. We want to start filing and documenting things correctly so that in the future, we don't run into some of the problems that are out there in terms of liabilities with HR-related things. So, that is that. Are there any other questions about the policies for now?
Sure. Just for clarification and for myself and perhaps other people watching, what is FMLA?
Family Medical Leave Act. So, that deals with, say, my father was sick, there, there are certain family members that I can take time off from work and have my job protected for me for a period of time. I still, I'm, I can only take my normal leave and then you apply for FMLA for, there are certain cases, yeah. So, new parents frequently use it because we have a terrible parental leave policy in this country, in my opinion. So, as a, as a parent of two young children, that, that, that's what that is, type of thing. So, we, we need a policy, we have a quarry policy in there in terms of background checks on new employees and things like that.
Thank you.
So, that's that. The next thing that I have is a management performance evaluation policy. So, this is what I am going to be using, and it's kind of extensive, for my department head evaluations. I want to have a standardized evaluation that I'm using with all of my department heads, the, some of the appointed positions that are directly appointed by the council. If, you've indicated previously that you would like me to perform per, performance evaluations with them, I would be happy to include them in this process as well. And, you know, I can't take credit for this, this is actually done, a fair amount of the work was done in needham by the current town administrator or town manager, Kate Fitzpatrick, she did the, she did a lot of work on this, and I feel like it's almost the model of department head evaluations. And I, I think it's good enough that if you all are looking for an evaluation type of thing for my performance, that's part of my contract, I think this was as good a template as any to kind of utilize to work through the process with me, type of thing, if you would like. So, that is something that I will be working on going forward, and I didn't note this before, but part of the process going forward in January that I would like to have an outside meeting with the council concerning setting goals and objectives for the budget going forward and have, have someone come in and help me explain some of the particularities of the charter and what type of language. It helps us with the visioning process and moving forward of what we're looking to set as goals and objectives within the authority that we have within the charter, so that we're setting out a path, that the budget is a forward-looking document that informs what the departments are doing, the goals and objectives of departments, a fair amount of them should tail up to what the goals and objectives of the town council are. If we're not working kind of in, on the same path, then people can go out on tangents and things like that, and I want to try to hone in as much as possible in terms of, this is what the council is looking to do, this is what I'm informing the government to be doing, and over time, we will develop those metrics that show if we're making progress towards those goals and objectives. But that's something I would like to do in January, February, so we can have it reflected in the budget document for this year, that we have some clear goals and objectives of the council. And if you would like, I could kind of comb through the ones that I get from department levels and you could choose the ones that are your highest priority, but I would like at least a conversation in a facilitated manner that you could kind of come up with some more organic ones that you're really interested in pursuing, because it's important, and that's what a forward-looking document does, and our annual report can reflect back on those goals and objectives if we achieve things and things like that. So, yeah, important stuff going forward, but like I said, in, kind of in December and January, while I'm working in the budget with the finance director and some others, this is my time where I can kind of update some of these things that I've been looking to since I've been here, when it's a little bit quieter, and I can get a whole personnel book built and things like that. So, yeah. Any questions in terms of the evaluation template? It's kind of extensive, I hope they all get on board with it and take it seriously and all honestly, but I, I really want to set the standard that this is, this is what's going to happen every year and set a standard for myself, for someone down the line in my role, doing the same type of thing and having it expected of department heads in the future.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Public comment? Hearing none?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just because I don't know what has happened since, with Massport, with the new pilot program payments, have you signed that agreement with them?
I did.
You have, so that is in writing, it's already happened.
I did sign that agreement. What we need to still do is name the members of the Winthrop Foundation so they can get going on that. I just actually had a great conversation with students from the, the Viking Longship program today, and I think it could be a great opportunity for them to find a, they'd have to apply for it every year, but a potential funding solution for them so they can do some of the interesting projects that they're looking to do and they don't necessarily, they can have a funding stream so they can always do projects that they're looking to do, but then they can go for outside money for bigger projects, for more specified projects that they want to do. But I personally, I can talk about this now, I think it would be a great opportunity if the Viking Longship program was the way that we got a new shed built at the golf course, and we utilized with the foundation money to fund the Viking Longship program, and we got a shed built out of it that was built by our students and is a little cooler looking than us just buying some shed from Reed's Ferry or something like that. It could be something unique to that golf course, and if there's ever, no longer a golf course there, it's going to be a nice building there afterwards too. So, I think it would be a really interesting way to utilize multiple facets of kind of inside-outside money, but Massport, I think, would be really excited about something like that as well, because it continues kind of their investment in this community, and it would leave something behind that they've invested in as well.
Excellent.
Yes.
So, I just want to be sure, before I sign a letter on Massport, that we've already squint away the other things that we're dealing with, Massport.
That has nothing to do with it. We didn't give any rights away, we can ask them for anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't change anything.
I concur.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, on that note, public relations, does anybody have anything to comment on? The public relations item, or, no? From now on, we do one of the school committee, we go around and ask if anybody would like to mention anybody, it's a kind of a good thing to get something going on in your precinct or whatever. On that note, I just will make a comment, I don't know if anybody went to see Beauty and the Beast over the, this past weekend? Kids in the middle school did an outstanding job. There was ever any doubt in anybody's mind that the kids in Winthrop did not deserve the new middle high school, can't be any doubt. I mean, they did a fantastic job. We expect it from the seniors and, you know, the high school, but the middle school production was all kids. There were no adults in the back, none whatsoever. It was all run by the kids. They did a spectacular job. So, on that note, I wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas to all of our residents, Happy Hanukkah. I know it's already passed, but whatever the holiday is that you're celebrating, have a great one, and I wish you all the best to council members. From that note, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good night.